All right. We'll call this work session to order. First item of business will be the construction excise tax conversation, which will be led by Leila Aman and Christina Fedrick.
Good afternoon, councilors. So this is the construction excise tax criteria update. We have had an oversight group that has been meeting over the last five months. We have come up with the criteria for you of their recommendations. So provide a little background and then what they have recommended. So this tax was enabled by state legislation. And the ORS prescribes how those incentives for the tax can be offered. Affordable housing that the construction excise taxes use for is defined as housing that is affordable to households who earn at least as low as 80% of the area or the median family income for Milwaukee. So for us, we're looking at $70,320. And then affordable housing would mean that that's no more than $1,758 per month spent on housing.
I'm sorry, what's that?
And that's because of the county? We're using the county's number? Because that's too high if it's Milwaukee's.
Yeah, so Milwaukee's household income, according to the census, is $63,421. And that's not the 80%. That's just the...
The area median income.
That's the area median income for Milwaukee.
That's not what we have in our other portion of our packet and also not what I've seen recently.
It was 43 some.
55 in the most recent.
Well, it was 55 or 56 at the time of the housing needs analysis. But it seems to me it might have gone up since then.
It was even lower in the 2016 housing needs analysis, I thought. Because it was based on the 2014 numbers. It's now up to about 55. I think we need to...
Yeah, these are as of 2018 for the census. It's the 63,421. So that's a little bit higher than what was in the housing needs analysis.
Would you... We'll continue in this conversation. But Angela, I know you have several emails, because I've been on them over time, that have sort of the amounts.
Okay, I just... I mean, two things. Obviously, we want to make sure that the number's right. But also, I just want to point out that that is such a rapid increase over such a short amount of time that we are talking about displacement and not increase in incomes.
And just to clarify before we move forward, this CET tax, according to state law and by our local ordinance, goes off of the median family income for the Portland metropolitan area. So we're considering all of our neighbors within that number.
I'm sorry, you're saying we have to, under state law, we have to consider the metro area, not just the Milwaukee?
Right. And that's from Housing Urban Development.
But in that... Sorry, you're never going to get through your presentation.
That's okay.
So in that, it says at least as low as 80%. So that suggests to me that we could decide to say 60% of area median income? Or that there's some latitude there?
Yes.
So if we determine that $66,000 is due to displacement, not due to increase in income, we have some control over whether or not we go with that number.
Yes.
And I believe that just applies to the residential portion.
And nobody heard anything I just said up here.
I did, it was brilliant. Great. Well, you said we could go lower than 80. I think that's right.
That's right.
That's right.
Okay.
It was just really funny when I looked over.
I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
So...
Always throws everything into a kerfuffle.
So the CET tax and the oversight group were prompted from the Milwaukee Housing Affordability Strategy. It's under goal number one for creation of those. We had the ordinance that was passed in 2017. And then the strategy was adopted in 2018. But our CET tax, it is a 1% collection on both residential and commercial construction in the city. And those funds go into two different buckets. So we have a residential... We have funding from residential development and funding from commercial development. And I'll go into what those are in a bit. So the construction excise tax oversight group, as I said, they've met over the course of five months, three times, and then over email edits and recommendations were exchanged. And they've been... Their purpose has been to provide transparency and accountability in this process for the program development, to provide recommendations to you in developing the criteria and helping with the marketing of the new program. Just to go back on how the group was comprised, we have three technical participants and four at-large community participants. So the three technical participants, it's a mix of... We have two alternating members. There are loan officers from Anquan Bank. And then we have our city finance director, Bonnie Dennis. And we had a member from a community-based organization and nonprofit that works on homeownership programs. And then the four at-large community participants are a few schoolteachers that work with our underserved populations and that are in financial need. And then we have a homeowner who's retired, who has been involved in community organizations for both renters and homeowners. And a member who is a real estate broker and is involved with the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. So look at the revenue to date. These numbers, I want to note, are updated from the totals you have in your packet at the time I wrote the staff report. And these are together with the administrative fee that is taken from the top of these funds. In the commercial tax collection for 2018, you'll see that that spike, it's a lot higher than 2019. That is because of the Axel Tree Development downtown. So it may be closer to the 2019 total going forward. A bit about how that tax collected is broken down into how we're able to spend it. So first, the residential development. It's broken down into three buckets. 50% to developer incentives to build income-restricted housing that serves up to 80% of median family income. So these incentives could be things such as system development charge waivers, tax exemptions as financial incentives, or other incentives like permit fee waivers, possibly frontage improvement assistance, things like that. And then 35% of the funding can go towards other programs and activities, things like land banking. The city can acquire purchased land and then allowing projects to be more affordable because developers wouldn't have to charge rents to make up for the land that they purchased. Land trust, there's existing organizations that can do the same thing like the city would do with land banking and making permanently affordable homes to homeowners, so in perpetuity. And then 15% is directly passed down to the Oregon Housing and Community Services for down payment assistance. And they have programs that are working in the city of Milwaukee. And then for the commercial development funding, this serves workforce housing for half of it. So 50% of it can go towards those same incentives like SDC waivers, permit fees, tax exemptions. And 50% goes to economic development programs as designated by the city council. So some examples of that are the Central Milwaukee Land Use Plan, Downtown Riverfront Plan, and others as designated by you. A few goals of this program and part of what the CTOG was working on is to develop new income-restricted units, create equitable outcomes for all, and serve populations in financial need. The proposed criteria are missing middle housing, affordability periods, project readiness, underserved populations, transit-oriented development, and financial need.
Christina, what do you mean by affordability period? Can you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, so that would be the length of time that units would be required to be income-restricted.
Like the 20-year, 10-year, 30-year type of thing?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And these are preferred criteria. So they're not necessarily must-haves, but they are priorities and preferences. And some can be weighted more heavily than others.
And is that a prioritized list? Or are they all equal?
These aren't in an order.
They're not in an order?
Yeah.
But that kind of leads to one of my questions. Is there some weighting of these things?
We don't have numbers, like a scaling weighted system, yet. But depending on the number of years or the percent of affordability for a unit, some of those, like if you have two applications next to each other and you have one that's 10 years and one that's five years income-restricted, then you would be able to prioritize funding towards the one that is going to be affordable for 10 years. So it would be discretionary based on the application.
Right, I guess the reason that weighting might be useful is, let's say, in your example, you had one that was going to be affordable for 10 years, but it was going to be affordable for people in the 0 to 30 range. And the other one was going to be affordable for 20 years, but affordable in the, let's say, 100% area median income range. That's, you know, not apples and apples anymore.
Yeah.
That's... So, I mean, more directly, the question I have is... I was hoping out of this process, and perhaps it can still happen, that we would have arrived at some sort of bang-for-the-buck parameters of saying, okay, main goal, get as many people who are as... The most need possible housed, right? That's the goal. So then, of all the moving pieces we have, which are the leverage to pull to get us to that? Right? And my worry would be that, let's say, year one, we get a couple of proposals in, and they're kind of meh, okay, well... And we spend the money on them. And then year two, we get a proposal in that would just really knock it out of the park. And, oh, we didn't... We don't have any money left because we spent it last year. Right? So I would want some kind of sense of where we're going to get our mass most effect. Then be able to make decisions.
And I mean, I don't know if it's realistic to think that the people in this group have that expertise necessarily.
Well, certainly, technical people might.
Yeah.
Well, and that's part of what we're hoping to get feedback on today as well. I think we landed on a pretty rich set of criteria. And then a staff moves to implement that criteria. I think that's when you can start thinking about how do you weight it? What are the priorities? And so part of it being just an up... It's not just an update. We're actually asking for feedback on that from you. And with that direction, then staff will work to operationalize that criteria for applications. Is that fair?
Yes.
And I hear what you're saying, Mayor, about getting the most good to the greatest need. I also... And I don't have articulated fully what I'm thinking about this. But right now, there's a big push to get potentially a lot of services to that 0 to 30% area median income group. Is there the possibility that we will have a future in which the 40 to 60 is not getting met? And they aren't getting resources? And then we perhaps would want to differently think about who we need to best serve with these funds?
Right. I would think anything we do would be something that we look at every... Just like the Climate Action Plan, right? This is going to be very fluid. So every, whatever that is, three years, four years, we go back and we look and say, okay, where's the greatest need? Where's the...
So greatest need, define more in how do we... What are the populations we need to serve the most? Not necessarily, these are the people who are the neediest.
Maybe another way to look at it is, what are the... What's the best use for this program? Knowing what the other... You know, knowing what the other...
There we go. Yes.
There are other programs out there, other, you know, other tools that will be effective at getting to some of those other income ranges.
We best plug in.
Right.
Because we want to leverage the most dollars, do the greatest amount of good, and do the most we can everywhere for everyone. So, yes, what you said.
Now, it's an astute point. And I think that's... Christina, we'll talk about this more in her presentation. But I think that's why the committee leaned towards missing middle housing, because the amount of dollars we have is actually not huge. And they felt that that would have the greatest impact in terms of leveraging a certain housing type for income-restricted housing. And there's not really a lot... There's not a lot of programming out there to build those types of housing right now. Right now, there are programs for the 0 to 30. And I think, you know, with some of the zoning changes we're considering, you know, we're going to get at that upper level of the workforce housing. So in my mind, I'm thinking about this as a tool to get at what you're talking about, which is, you know, who's not getting anything right now? Who's not benefiting from the Metro bond? Who's not benefiting from, you know, the market rate affordability spectrum? And that's that lower end of the workforce housing. And I think you said something really important, too, which is our zoning. And we're going to be entering into a pretty in-depth zoning code update that will enable missing middle housing. And part of what we've committed to do is to pair that with incentives that help leverage income-restricted housing. And so that's precisely what I think this is intended to help support.
I don't disagree with any of that. I think that's all smart. However, to push back a little bit, Metro Housing Bond, in all of its glory, is literally going to affect one-fifth of the need.
No, I understand that. I understand that.
We still are going to have four times as many people in the 0 to 30 zone, many of them families, that are not going to get in.
And we also, though, we're benefiting from, you know, a close partnership with Clackamas County, who are... Who have, right now, in the pipeline, hundreds of new affordable housing units that are being built in Milwaukee. So I think that you can't take it in a... You know, I mean, I agree with you. There's this huge need. We can't meet all of it.
Oh, no.
And so I think the best use for this program is to pair it where there is absolutely no source of other funds.
Because all of these people, 0 to 30, 40 to 60, 60 to 80, they are all facing displacement. Because all of these people, 0 to 30, 40 to 60, 60 to 80, they are all facing displacement.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, I'm, I get it.
Okay. So missing middle housing, as Leila mentioned, this is one of the tools that we can use to pair with the incentives with the regulatory framework that's coming. So as House Bill 2001 is allowing duplexes on each space zone for residential use, that is code to be determined, this will help incentivize that for homeowners that may want to have an ADU in their backyard but can't afford it right now. CET tax might be something helpful for those.
And I want to, that's actually a place where I have a little, a little bit of uneasiness, because I do, I, I am really concerned about using this program for, to the benefit of people who already have a significant amount of wealth. Homeowners who own their homes already have many, 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 many times more wealth and access to that wealth than, than renters. And so I want to make sure that somehow we're, we're also, that this, that this program is really looking for new homeownership opportunities in the middle housing and not over, and not weighted mostly toward ADUs, because I think that that would be a failure of the use of this program. I think benefiting people who already have wealth is a huge missed opportunity in this program.
Well, and we also have the dilemma of enforcement on not using ADUs as Airbnbs. And, you know, I mean, we've talked about that a lot. And, you know, I think if somebody, but what if somebody's in the 80% below, 80%, you know, what if they're in the category and they do own a house because they've inherited it or because they bought it at a time when houses were not as expensive?
And that's a dog.
And, I mean, would we consider them then for an ADU? I mean, would we consider their income criteria of the homeowner as opposed to what we think the ADU's going to go for?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I just, I think that, really quickly, you know, the people who have access to, you know, the, who have the ability to access information about this program and use it to their advantage, I think very quickly this program will get depleted with, unfortunately, people who already have access to a significant amount of wealth. I mean, even in that, even in that example, you still have someone who has an opportunity to leverage that wealth through, you know, a refinance or some other mechanism where they can actually take the money out of their current, you know, existing home and plug it into an ADU. Really, I would think that this program should be geared toward the people who don't have access to those funds.
I'm going to jump, if you don't mind. Financial need is one of the criteria, so we don't want to put it in hands of people that already have access to these opportunities themselves without the assistance. So there will need to be a funding gap. This is a must that the CTOG has prioritized, and these are a few ways that they can demonstrate that. So what other income or funding sources do they have? Have they leveraged other funding sources? What, where are they getting it from? And the budget constraints detailing the cost of the construction, maintenance, rent or mortgages that are preventing them from providing housing? And then any explanations of financial setbacks? And this is financial need at the lens of the applicant that is developing, but I also want to note that it will be serving those, the groups that are, it has to be income restricted, so it will also be serving the populations that are underserved. But I hope this doesn't address that and...
Well, I wonder if this wouldn't be a good place to think about the possibility of having some sort of cap, you know? The first 10 ADUs, and then we do some sort of review to see who's actually using the program and how it's working and whether or not it's meeting the goals that we've set forth. Because this seems like a big wild card to me. It could be wildly successful and it could
Right.
hit all the targets, and it could just be nothing but crickets.
Well, when you say like the fir, you said some sort of criteria, like the first 10 ADUs, I, I'm going to assume that they would still be meeting all the other requirements, financial and whatever, because not just, oh, somebody applies for an ADU, so, okay, great.
So that includes for the property owner. So the property owner has to meet these criteria as well as the lease or the rental has to meet these criteria? I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
Let's take that apart a little bit, because I think when we originally were conceiving this, one of the things that we thought we could do with it is, say, when a developer's coming in and doing a five-story mixed-use building, and it was all going to be market rate units, and we could say, we can put X amount into this project through the frontage improvements, all the, you know, whatever, whatever things that we pay down out of this fund, if you guarantee that X number of the units are at 80% area median income for 30 years. If, if, if we all of a sudden are now saying that the owner or the, the person building the whatever has to also hit the income criteria, we're not going to be able to broker any of those kind of deals.
We have a different plan, though. But I'll leave it to Leila. Yeah, can I chime in on that now? So I think a couple of things, just in response to what the owner should be making, is that we do want to have folks that, you know, ideally aren't wealth, as wealthy, who actually need the incentive. And so what Christina has described in terms of the financial need analysis, you know, you do want an owner that has enough financial capacity to actually build something. So you kind of have a delicate balance there. Because the committee has really steered us towards providing this resource for this sort of middle housing type, what we're proposing to do, I was going to get to this later, but I'll get to it now, in terms of the multi-story buildings that you've mentioned, Mayor, the pot that we have in our CET would be exhausted on one project in order to leverage housing. So what we're proposing to do is come back to council and have a discussion about to what extent does a multifamily building, so either it's multifamily or mixed use, have to meet in order to be exempt from the tax? And so instead of taking in revenue, putting that revenue back into a project, the question we would pose to council is, not right now, but just to get you thinking, is at what point can we forego that revenue in order to leverage additional units in a multi-unit?
I thought we established that when we established the CET.
It was not included in, for a portion of the units of multifamily. So the change that we're talking about is very specific to multifamily for a percentage of the units. But Justin has been looking at this for the last couple of months with us, and it needs some clarity.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we felt compelled to have a transparent conversation about that with you and the public, but it's a way of the city being able to still leverage those housing units, but instead of taking the money and putting it back out, we're just saying, we just won't take the money in, but you have to do X, Y, and Z. So we're looking at, we're doing a financial analysis of like, what does that metric need to look like? And so when I have that information, I'll be coming back to you with that.
Let us get back. Okay, and one more thing on the affordability period, we went over this a little bit earlier. There's a goal of at least five years for the length of time that rent should be income restricted. The committee came up with this number just to serve a wide range of people that would be receiving funding. And just to, to make the program attractive enough to solicit applications but not burden the person receiving the funds with requiring this income restriction. And then the evaluation of the projects will be done on a project-by-project basis. So the, the number of units that are going to be built, the level of affordability, so maybe they're serving 0 to 30% median family income, and the longer income restricted periods will all be considered, and how quickly will they be built? Are these units that are going to be done in a year, or is it going to be three years down the line? So just responding to the urgency, too, in, in waiting. The project readiness, we want to, we want to feel comfortable that these projects are going to be built. So there needs to be some demonstration of financial feasibility is what's being recommended, and there must be evidence of it being shovel-ready. So do you have a site located and is it appropriately zoned for what is being proposed? What's the timeline, a year or three years down the line? And do you have a project team or builders and plans in place? Underserved populations are also one of the criteria, and there'll be a preference given to projects that are serving a diverse spectrum of people, of all ages, all backgrounds, and abilities, including communities of color and families of other historically underserved groups. So prioritizing applications to serve those have been, that have been disenfranchised and left out and not allowed access to housing or these opportunities. And then there will be a preference to organizations that aim to further fair housing practices. And this can be through translated materials, maybe they already serve these historically underserved groups. So if, if a nonprofit works to serve first-time homeowners that have been disenfranchised, then that will be an application that is prioritized. Anything else?
On the, the underserved, historically underserved groups, I, just a note about how, how do we define what those project, how those people are being served by a project? I'm thinking specifically about serving senior citizens or people who have mobility issues and how the actual design itself is a critical component there, because you need to do universal design standards with wider doors and fixtures that are easy to open and all of that. So I, I guess I just want to make sure that's in the mix as we're thinking about those as criteria.
Yes, so lifecycle housing will be considered universal design just to, for, for all populations. Some of the incentives could be towards rehab grants, so repair. So maybe there is a repair that's needed that is preventing somebody from developing a unit for, for somebody else or themselves to be able to age in place. So that will be considered.
I'm thrilled to hear that, because we don't, I don't feel like we do a whole lot around, because it's hard, preserving naturally occurring affordable housing.
Right, that's where we have an opportunity here, I think, yeah.
So that's great.
Rapidly dwindling opportunity, but yes.
Transit-oriented development to increase our opportunities for equity and walkability. This also touches on our climate action goals, and it just provides access to goods and services for people in these neighborhoods. And we've seen with the housing needs analysis that trends are gearing towards neighborhood hub-style centers and people using public transit and allowing for car-free living if people choose to do that. The metric the CTOG looked at is projects that are within a quarter mile from public transit. And so we realized that we don't have the most expansive public transit in Milwaukee yet, but here are some locations that we have the stops for.
And that's any public transit, or is that the frequent, whatever we consider?
Tram, lines, rail, bus stops.
So not just the ones that are frequent lines?
Yeah.
But all the lines, okay.
Yeah, because that would cut out basically the whole eastern portion of our city. If we just did frequent bus and, yeah.
Well, no, the, the one that goes down King Road is a frequent one, and I think the one that goes up
32nd.
32nd is.
Yeah.
But it would, it would actually cut out the one through the industrial, which doesn't really, which isn't really relevant for this anyway, but, and the one that goes through Island Station. But I think the ones on the east side would actually still be there, is my understanding.
I think most of Island Station is within a quarter mile of the Max Lane stops anyway, so, yeah.
Or the McLaughlin, yeah.
Yeah, or 32.
Financial need, we went over that. So our next steps, as Leila mentioned, to return with an amendment to the CET ordinance, if that's something you would be okay with, to clarify that a portion of multifamily units that are income restricted may be exempt from the construction excise tax in order to receive some of that funding. And then next, we are going to work on the program development, create the application and the guidelines. We're meeting with Clackamas County to talk about how we can monitor this program. So every year, how are we going to ensure these units are income restricted? So we'll have to do some type of annual recertification for that. And then create some internal administrative roles, and then marketing the program. And we're looking towards summer 2020. And then these are the different methods that we can market that.
So can we go back to, I mean, thinking about if you're, you know, we're thinking of big building, big apartment buildings are going to have something separate, that this is not for them, and we don't want to put all the eggs in the basket of ADU. So what does that leave? I mean, you know, in a, when we finish with our housing, it'll, you know, we'll presumably have more kinds of middle housing, but right now, that leaves sort of small apartment buildings where apartment buildings are allowed, duplexes, well, duplexes are allowed anywhere. But with duplexes, it's again going to be
Duplexes.
Families who already have wealth because they own, I mean, I guess
I guess not necessarily if you're building a duplex with, with the, with the, you know, some, well, I don't know. I mean, I guess it would depend on the application, right? Because you could see a duplex being developed by a developer who is then going to sell both of them to an income restricted, you know, to households.
Or the naturally occurring housing piece. I mean, I think it'd be interesting to do some marketing outreach through the building permits office in some way to see if there's people we can capture there who wouldn't necessarily be thinking of the fact that, you know, fixing the rafters in their basement could lead to building affordable housing in some fashion.
I don't know.
So you're thinking, like you're visioning
Internal divisions or?
Yeah, is that what you mean by internally dividing a house into more units?
Right.
Okay.
Speaking of that, are SROs technically part of missing middle? Anybody know?
I don't think that they're included in the definition that was just passed by statute.
Yeah, I don't think so. And I think SROs can range from a duplex to a multi-story building, so.
Yeah.
Would you like to spell that out?
One of those other missing, or middle housing that's defined by the HB 2001.
Yeah, and that's a single-room occupancy, just spelling out the acronym.
Right.
Thanks.
So I'm not seeing how that would really work in a duplex, per se. I mean, the concept of the single-room occupancy is that you would have, whatever, six, eight, 10 bedrooms with a shared kitchen and a couple of shared bathrooms. I don't think there's anything in our current design definitions that get us there if it's not in missing middle.
I wonder if live-work, I don't know if live-work would fall into that, so.
Not really.
No.
Well, I mean, truthfully, I remember having a conversation with the former police chief about, you know, I mean, I think people can rent rooms, they can divide up a house and rent rooms to six different people and have a, basically a boarding house. It's an SRO, it's the same thing.
That occurs around town, just kind of naturally.
Right. I just, I don't think it's barred, but I don't think, yeah.
But we don't have a, we don't have any thing in code that I'm aware of that would allow purpose-built SRO, which is, if you think about sort of the financial situation that we're in and call it analogous to 100 years ago, there were a lot of SROs back then. That was actually a really common housing form. And that's, to my mind, one of the reasons we see a lot of homelessness is because that option is not on the table. There is no place, I mean, other than finding a situation where somebody will rent you a room in their house. Right? But we're not, nobody's specifically building that. I shouldn't say nobody, because Clackamas County is about to build one in Gladstone, but it would be It would be, I think that's a really missing part of the mix of housing that we could fix to start, and this seems like a perfect way to do that.
Yeah, we can consider that. And missing middle, it's only a preference, so it is a consideration that is preferred, but it's not limited to that. Single-room occupancy, boarding house style is something that we can give these funds towards.
Yeah, I think it's a great suggestion to add to the list. And then I think the intent of this program, right, is to leverage the kind of housing we want to see. And so I will take the fifth on whether or not it's allowed by code because I can't quite remember, so I'm not going to say.
I remember seeing something recently that actually made us think like, oh, this is, we know it's happening in the community, but we also know that it's not allowed and that there was, there was some language that we read recently.
It's the thing we're going to have to fix in our code process.
When it came up when we were talking about Berman.
Pardon?
It had come up when we were talking about Berman, so I know that we had asked any to look into it, so we'll make sure that we get your sense.
Yeah, because I will tell you that in a case where some neighbors had concerns about something that was being operated as a boarding house about 10 years ago, they were told, you know, sorry, that's legal, they can't, you know, there's nothing wrong with them doing that.
But it could have been maybe some underlying zoning issue that made that okay. Because I do remember us asking, at least asking the question, do we need to fix this?
You're definitely allowed to rent out rooms in your house. And we haven't, other than the state law that said no more than five unrelated people or some weird, is it five unrelated people in a...
I think there's something in our code that says something along those lines.
Well, I mean, that doesn't seem right because we have all those Oxford houses and they're, the latest one has 12.
Yeah, that's different because that's a very specific community use.
Use, yeah.
Just straight-up house with numbers of people. And it's a law that no one enforces, but it is on the books still.
As a state law?
As a state law, although they touched that in 2001.
Well, we will look into it, and I think it's something we need to examine too as part of our code audit when we move into the housing, because there's some discriminatory elements of that kind of language, I think. And so I don't know whether or not it's mandated by the state, so I don't want to answer that question, but what I can say is that we'll look into it and it will certainly be part of what we analyze as part of our housing. One of the first steps we're proposing is doing an audit of our existing code. So we'll look into those items and get back to you on it.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Any other feedback on the proposed criteria or how we should market the program?
Go ahead.
I think the criteria is good, given all the additions and conversation we've had. Something I wanted to talk about when we start marketing it, the way we talk about the various buckets online or wherever are going to be our source, it's not clear, at least from the graphics we're currently using, that some of these can be stacked.
Right.
So for example, the residential...
The commercial.
Out-of-commercial and the residential from residential could be stacked if you were doing it at 80%, you know? So I think there's some opportunity there to help people understand that there's more to it. And obviously, whatever the metric is for how much money is available is going to be constantly changing. So it's going to have to be something that's somehow integrated into whoever's keeping track of that, that it just either automatically changes or somebody gets in there once a month and automatically is probably better.
Yeah, that's helpful.
We're going to have another bite at the, some of like the certain criteria that you're going to bring back to us because we really didn't have any kind of a conversation about like affordability, you know, the time, like five years, whether five years is, you know, I mean, I'd like for us to have a conversation about that analysis. I'm sure you all have done it, but I'd want to know what that is.
Well, it's part of what we hope to accomplish today, but I'm looking at the city manager thinking our time may be up, so.
Which is okay, and we've got 10 more minutes if you want to, but we'll have to bring it back.
Yeah, I don't know that I have enough information to make an educated decision about that, but I want to have more of a conversation about whether five years is an appropriate length of time.
Right, yeah. The example you gave on forgiving SDCs for an ADU, maybe that is an appropriate amount of time, but if we're actually putting cash out of this fund into it.
Yeah, the metric we looked at, if it's helpful, is we looked at, so for example, if you had an 80% unit versus market rate, kind of what is the foregone revenue over a period of time? And so we looked at if we were able to backfill. So we talk about waiving, we're actually talking about backfilling SDCs. So the city would waive it, but we would actually pay the SDC. And it was about that three to five year is where that benefit outweighed the cost. So we start extending beyond that, then the cost becomes so much greater that that foregone revenue, that it's likely that someone who is income-restricted trying to develop a unit like this becomes too burdensome. And so I think the objective was by having kind of that five-year limit, it's not, we want 30, right? We want in perpetuity. That would be wonderful and ideal. Whether it's financially practical is arguable, I think. But what it does is hopefully incentivizes someone to build something sooner, get something on the market, we get some sort of income restriction period, and then we've added to the supply. So that was sort of the logic in my mind as we discussed this with the committee, is at least this gets us something, it gets us something sooner. We do have at least some income restriction for, not an ideal, but a truncated period of time. So that's sort of where that came from, is we did look at, we did some back-of-the-envelope calculations on the foregone revenue between an 80% and 100% unit, what that looked like over 10 years, kind of looked, discounted that back to today and then compared that to the incentive, and it was like, yeah, three to five years felt reasonable.
So I think if we did that, something that short, we'd need to make sure that there's a provision that in whatever lease documents or rent documents was used, that that was very clear.
Yeah.
Somebody moving into a place thinking, awesome, I've got a place that I can afford on my income, and they're thinking in perpetuity.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, in five years, it doubles or whatever.
Well, but I think that they would still be, wouldn't they still be subject to the 10% increase cap?
No, because it's within those 10 years or 15 years.
No, that's state law.
That's state law.
Yeah.
Right, but if we're restrict, okay, well, not really. If we're saying we are artificially restricting how much you can charge for this place and then we're not artificially restricting, then they're back to market.
Well, as soon as that tenant moves out. So if the tenant moves out on their own, there's a no, like there's no cause of fiction protection. So if that tenant moves out at year seven, then yes, that owner can then rent it at market rate.
But if the same tenant is in there, then they're protected by the new state law, which is that it can't go up more than 9.9% or whatever, for at least in...
Per year, right.
And there is, we do have a cautionary tale from our neighbors next door who, in Portland, tried to incentivize ADU development for lower-income families and what have you. I have multiple friends who tried to take advantage of that program, and it was so burdensome and so complicated and so hard to see when the payout would actually, whether or not the payout would actually pencil out, that they ended up not participating. And they really wanted to be able to contribute and they ended up building...
And is it across, I guess, or B&amp;Bs, you know? What I'm really interested to know also is, you know, it seems like, you know, is that something that's being said across the board or are we thinking about that and, you know, a five-year would be appropriate for ADUs? Or, you know, is it a longer, and can we make it different from different...
That was the assumption.
Yeah. Different housing types and levels of affordability and...
Right, so it's a minimum of five years, and the committee was pretty firm on that. I think we had suggested three to five, and the committee was pretty firm that they wanted five years, and I think that that makes sense. But I think as we operationalize this program, we start to get applications in, I think we need to tie it to the funding amount, too. So if you get $50,000, say, as a grant for your project, five years is probably not going to be that number. And so I think as we talk about, that's why we're talking about a summer kickoff, is we've got quite a bit of work to do in order to really understand. We've built a lot of flexibility into this program, which also means that we have to be able to adjust. And so I think your suggestion for us to test this thing out, come back and report back on how it's working, perhaps a year from the point at which we put the, get this thing moving, would be a good time to then evaluate, how is it working? Is, are we getting enough interest? Are we getting none? What does that mean? So I think if you can work with us on that, we can address those issues and we can start to see, well, we're getting a lot of applications, we're doing this. So we've now designed the timeline to be X, Y, and Z. Because it's a bit, it's new, which means no one's done it this way before, and so we have some learning to do. But I think that the criteria that the committee has provided is a solid foundation that reflects the goals that this city has for providing housing affordability. So I think that if you're comfortable with that, what we'll do is, well, unless we want to come back and have a further discussion around this, I'll defer to you on that. We'll certainly come back a year after the program is executed and report back on what we're doing, what we're seeing, and we can discuss changing the criteria at that time if we need to.
And so in terms, you know, measuring success, I mean, you'll be looking back at the criteria, you'll be looking back at sort of, you know, is this serving, you know, these underrepresented, you know, communities that we, you know, that we had hoped to target, you know? If not getting that level, you know, that interest, you know, that you want to see, you know, we're not marking that as a success. I would think that we would say, okay, we need to do more. We're not, we're missing.
Something different, right? So this is a starting point for us. And I think if we get it out there and we get some interest, if there's success in like getting it out there, it's just, the success is really looking at it and being critical of it and saying, what's missing here? Why isn't this working? Or this is working a little too well.
Right.
How do we adjust that in order to make sure we're delivering these resources to the people that need it the most to get the housing units that we desire the most?
Well, yeah, so I guess that gets back to the suggestion of a cap of, on ADUs or whatever categories you foresee maybe having some cap so it doesn't run away in one area or another. I guess I had two questions. One is, you know, the groups that we normally think about for affordable housing, like Northwest Housing Alternatives and Reach, they, you know, are operating typically rental units. They're not selling housing, they're not about homeownership. Are there groups that are about building affordable housing for homeownership opportunities? There are, okay.
Yeah, I think both public and private, but Proud Grounds, probably the easiest reference, is the Land Trust and they're, they don't actually develop it, but they are the ones that usually work with developers, develop the housing, and then they sell it, and they have a model by which they use. I know there's also private sector developers who are interested in doing some similar kind of model, but it's typically a deed restriction.
The big one that does where you're involved in the build on your house and...
Habitat.
Habitat, yeah.
Thank you.
And 15% of the funds is going directly to the Oregon Housing Community Services to down payment assistance programs, so part of it, not, the city doesn't have control of those funds, but part of that is towards homeownership.
Right, I guess I was just trying to think of, so this gets to my other question, which isn't exactly on the CET, but, you know, we've had this conversation for a while about bringing together the taxing districts to talk about a tax waiver for publicly-owned housing and, I mean, for nonprofits owning affordable housing. And I just wondered where we stood on having that kind of a meeting and, yeah.
No, we spoke earlier, so I just wanted to kind of give council an update and to get some feedback from all of you. When Councilor Beatty and I had talked a few, about a month ago, we had talked about the need for speed on the nonprofit housing affordability piece, but we keep coming back to having discussions about tax abatement. And so the discussion that she and I had is if the council is interested, Kelly and I can work on actually doing a call-out to all the taxing districts and just having a discussion, not about a specific topic, because by the time we get there, it doesn't, it's too fast, we have to go too fast, but talking about just generally tax abatements and tax credits and all those pieces and giving them a chance to have a voice. We talked about trying to do that in May, if that was of interest to all of you, just so that, because by June, we'll lose the school district and they end up going on vacation for part of the summer. And so May is probably about as late as I push it and just knowing what else we have going this spring, I think that's also the earliest to get on people's calendars and really get something scheduled. So if you're comfortable, if you're in alignment, then we would work on doing something around that for May.
And you're talking about staff-level, you're talking about staff-level conversations between you, okay.
We're already doing the staff-level conversations. The question is whether or not you want to meet with your elected officials and with other executives, my equals and other organizations, to talk about the decisions that you're making around tax abatement.
I think that, I think the format of it, I think, is sort of depend, I guess I have mixed feelings about the idea of having 20 people sitting around a table and having one conversation or maybe having, you know, let's talk about the districts that we, no, we don't need 20 individual conversations. We know exactly who the boards are that we need to talk to. The fire board, the school board are the biggest ones and the county.
Yeah, I think the NCPRD and West are probably worth having at the table as well.
Yeah, but that's my question, though. Is it one big table or is it four tables?
Totally respect that. We've been treating it as four tables, but if...
Oh, I thought you'd been treating it as one big table.
No, no, the discussion I just had is one big table. But the staff have been meeting with individuals, I've been talking to leadership at some of the organizations to make sure that they know what's coming and that I'm hearing personally from them. But I also, I want to make sure I'm meeting your expectations because I'm not sure we've had this clear of a conversation about it in the past, so I'm open.
So my concern is the way we did it before, it was the school district and the city were the 500-pound gorillas who got to do what they wanted to do without any input from, and hearing from the other taxing districts. And so we know the fire district has concerns, we don't know that anybody else has concerns, but I think just in the general principle of good governance and good, you know, partnership with all these other districts, we need to give them a chance to come, say, and so to me, I see it kind of as a joint meeting between us and the school board inviting all those others and basically saying, we do anticipate we're going to be doing this some more, and so we want you to come.
I think that's one approach, but I wonder if we don't have more constructive conversations at four tables with that individual board who has specific concerns and we can benefit from the conversation that you all have had. And because I think that we're limited on time when we have one big conversation and there might be, you know, I think we maybe potentially set up sort of an unnecessarily like adversarial type, you know, conversation when it really could be a much smaller roundtable conversation with real hard facts. I mean, some of the things that we heard at our fire district, you know, meeting, like, you know, that people were throwing out numbers like we're losing, you know, we're standing to lose millions of dollars in revenue if you do this. And we looked at each other like, that's not true. So if someone like that goes to a meeting and says that, where there are 20 other boards sitting around the table and they say, well, hell, the fire district's losing $20 million, well, then that must mean that I'm losing 20, and then the whole thing throws, gets thrown into chaos, and I don't think that's a productive conversation.
Well, don't you think they, I mean, they have to come with support for their...
I don't know.
Their numbers, right?
I worry about when you're in a big conversation that way, you tend, things like that can be, you know, thrown out there.
Well, I mean, I'm okay with doing it, but that's a lot of meetings.
It is, it is, but I think it might be potentially more productive, but I could be wrong, and that's just, those are my two cents.
I don't disagree, I think you're right strategically.
So how, just for my own clarity, how do you want to set those up? Or can we bring this up at a future topic since we are getting a little bit over? I will, all agenda, we've, I think, have one more meeting that's rational on our departure from the meeting time. We then have two midnight times in a row, so I'm going to try and find one of those times that we're not at midnight and we'll continue this conversation. I also just wanted to let everyone know, when we talk about 10 units, if we did go down this path with the CET and using this for 10 ADUs, right now, that's the same percentage that Portland was able to achieve, we just have a much smaller population base. So it's actually a pretty good number when you look at how many units they were able to bring in through their program, and it is a big lift for us to hit 10 if we're using the income-restricted components of this. So I think it's a great opportunity for us to do some testing, but I would ask that you would be okay if we came back earlier, if it looks like we're executing on more than 10, I'd like to talk to you.
Yeah, I think that makes good sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you very much. And thank you to that committee.
Yeah.
Just a bunch of people who had to become experts.
One of our members here. So I am going to leave the logo up because it looks lovely. We do not have any slides for the next conversation, but this is council's conversation to talk about the compensation component. The citizens' jury came back in November with some information for all of you. We were trying to find a time schedule, this is the first chance that we have had, so I'm actually going to largely hand this over to you. Justin and I are here, if you have questions. I see that Robin is also here, and I appreciate that. So she is with the group that led all these discussions, and we will, we will help in any way we can, but this is yours.
Okay. Well, for starters, I want to make sure that we thank the group. Well, for starters, I want to make sure that we thank the group. That's a lot of work, it's a lot of time, it's a lot of effort, and, and it's, it's a tough topic to really dig into and come up with a useful answer. And I, I want to have a conversation a little bit about why I, because I, to some degree, did kick this off. Before I was ever on Council, the mayor that was, the mayor at the time, had reached out to me to try and form a committee to have this very conversation then, because what he was experiencing was that he was putting in somewhere between 30 and 40, 50 hours a week of his time and found it very difficult to make a living. And in my five years as mayor, I've experienced pretty much the same thing. Beyond that, the philosophical concept of what a representative government looks like and who can afford to be in a representative government. I think one of the things that Oregon suffers from, because not all states do this, is that very thing where we have decided that elected officials, elected, people elected to office are volunteers. They're, they're doing it out of the goodness of their heart or whatever. And so we pay our state legislators 24,000 or whatever they're currently paid, and they work hundreds of hours, which sounds good superficially. It sounds great that somebody is willing to do that work. What it does, in reality, is very much limit who can do that. And I had this exact conversation a few years back with the former, recently deceased Secretary of State, and we never got quite to an agreement, but he understood my point, and that is that we claim to have a representative government. That is our ideal, that's what we hope to achieve. But if someone is putting in between 20 and 50 hours a week doing whatever that volunteer thing is, they are by that very fact precluded from earning an income during those same hours. And so the only people then that can do that are people who typically are either wealthy or retired and have an income that they can count on. And that was the point I made to the Secretary. I said, so how does a single mom making 12 bucks an hour run for state rep or city council someplace? And his attitude was that, when I said, so that what that results in is generally speaking, a bunch of old white wealthy men in those offices, and he said, that's as it should be.
He did say that?
He said, that's as it should be. And he defended that by saying that the point of the legislature is to, to control and to work with the state's money, and so people who have experience and who are people that have money are best suited for that. And I, of course, vehemently disagreed with that position for, I think we spoke for a couple of hours, actually.
It was at the Gladstone Cities Dinner, I believe.
That was where it started, and then it continued a day and a half later, two days later, on the phone. And, and to my mind, that carries down also to the city level. I imagine back when city councils of cities of 400 people first started, you know, a couple hours a month, four hours a month, was probably enough to be the city council to decide, yes, let's put a road in on Main Street. But these days, there are such complicated issues and, and a city of 22,000 people is a little more robust than, than what those were back then, that it is, if you're going to do the job well, it's, it's time consuming. There are many committees around the region, metro, county level, even state level committees to be sat on, and should somebody want to really serve their city the best it can be served, they will sit on as many of those as they can, because you are either at the table or you're on the menu, as they say. And I've found it very productive for the city of Milwaukee to be at those tables in many instances. The money we just got for the Monroe Greenway, 3-point, however many million dollars...
Eight.
3.8? Okay, 3.8 million dollars was due entirely to the fact that I sat at those tables for the last five years. So I, I've been able to do this because I owned a house, I was able to sell a house and live off the proceeds for a period of time, and I could put full time into this and live. Not everybody has that opportunity, and certainly I would argue that most people don't have that opportunity. And if we hope to see a truly representational government where members of our society from all, the entire strata of, of the rich American experience on city councils, making those decisions on a daily basis, on rules and regulations that affect people very much in their day-to-day lives. And the point I made to the Secretary back then is even if every single one of those old wealthy white men are saints and they want the very best thing for everyone, and they are doing their very best to make decisions that are the very best for everyone, they do not have the lived experience to understand how that thing affects that rule they just made, that new law they passed, or affects a Hispanic single mom with three kids living on 10 bucks an hour. They can't know it. They can't possibly know it. So I have been and will remain, continue to be a proponent for getting mayors, city councillors, state representatives paid at least minimum wage for their time.
So I made a mistake at the beginning of this by not reminding you that in the staff report, it actually calls out that when we start this conversation, I was supposed to ask all of you to make a declaration of a potential conflict of interest. The discussion that we've had historically was that you were not personally going to be receiving this in your existing seat, but most of you have a potential of still being able to run for a future seat. So I apologize. We've been talking just to make sure that we have the correct verbiage for you, but in this conversation...
I assumed that would be at a hearing where we were making some kind of decision, not in a work session, we were having a conversation.
I understand, but the Ethics Commission has been fairly clear that it is still advocacy or not, you know, it could be either way. So I would just recommend that during the conversation, super fast, if you wouldn't mind, just making sure. Thank you.
Okay, do you, what's the language?
Hi, this is Kathy. I don't know. It's that you, you're declaring because you could run for a future, future potential seat at the city of Milwaukee, and if there was a raise generated through these discussions or a vote, that you would receive that, should you be elected, that you have a potential conflict of interest.
Okay, I'll start off, because I think there's a thing we need to say before that. The intention from the beginning of this conversation was never that this sitting council would receive an income change. The intention all along was that before anybody received an income change, there would have been an election for that seat. Now, that person may end up in that seat again, but there would have been an election for that seat. So...
That's perfect.
From that standpoint, and knowing that at some future date I could run for this position or a city council position, I suppose, it is a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you, that's perfect.
You want us to all go around and say that, right?
I think it's easy, it's just so that you then can have an open dialogue.
They just say ditto.
You can, you can totally say that, I have no concerns about it, I just want to make sure it's on the record.
Okay, well, I'll just say ditto to what the mayor said, I could have a potential conflict of interest.
I have a potential conflict of interest.
I don't.
Are you making an announcement?
He is not going to run again.
She is making that announcement already. Thank you for your announcement.
An old retired person on the city council, and I do not intend to run again.
Thank you.
I'm virtually retired.
I, I am none of those things, and I do have a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you.
So I think, I got to have a conversation with Lynn about the process, and I feel like perhaps there could have been more information coming from either this city specifically or perhaps other mayors or other city councillors from other cities, if that would have been a more, whatever, unbiased point of view. And I, it's clear that the discussion was rich and deep and, and I'm impressed with the process, and I've recommended, there's another mayor that's reached out to me to ask what I thought of the process, because they're thinking about going through it for, I'm not even sure what topic. And I said, I thought the process was excellent. What you have to make sure is that they have the opportunity to get all the information they need in order to make an informed decision. But other than that, I think the, the process was amazing, so, and I really appreciate the work you guys did. So, and we have, what, a majority decision and two minority opinions or three minority opinions?
Three, there were several. I think...
At least three.
Two or more.
Three, four.
Four minority opinions. So I think this bears further discussion, and I think at some point, and it's probably not tonight, because we still have an executive session to sit through, to think about what we would take, I think whatever we propose should just go on the ballot. It shouldn't be a decision we make in any case.
Even if it's the majority, which is a fairly small...
Very small.
...increase, which is just basically a cost of living type increase, it's not...
Oh, it's cost of living and a cellphone stipend for the mayor, and wasn't it, wasn't that the one that had that?
Yeah, I think it, I think that...
Yes.
That recommenda, the recommendation that it go to the voters...
It's pretty simple.
Would be based on if it was...
A bigger increase.
Yeah, and, and, you know, if, if it could not be funded through the city budget.
Right.
So, and I would, you know, I would of course agree with that. I don't think that any one of us had ever thought that this would come anyhow, so, but it also gets to a question, I thought we were maybe going to have an opportunity to ask some clarifying questions about some of the assumptions or some of the, I don't want to call them findings, but some of the recommendations are based on some assumptions that I find, that I, that I'm struggling to square with what I know, which is that we have not gone over budget in multiple places. And so I, I'm, I actually like the recommendations to track more closely. Of course, we obviously have to submit all of, you know, any expenses that we...
We've corrected it in the coming budget, so I can tell you what the situation was.
That would be helpful, just for my understanding.
No, absolutely. So we, you all have been putting on a dinner for the surrounding cities for a long time, and so there was a chunk of money that would be expended out of the line item for that expense. We would then receive reimbursement back to the city, and it wasn't correlating, so the funds weren't being returned to your fund, and that's why it looked like it was off-base. It was not for any expenditure that was being made by individual councillors, and we've had a discussion about how to make sure that that doesn't happen in the future.
That's helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, I was kind of shocked by that one myself.
Yeah, I would not think, I mean, if we were going with...
The majority.
Anything but the last minority recommendation, I would not see it as something that would have to go to the voters. I think it's a small enough, as long as, you know, it's clear that it's not, it's not applicable to any of us sitting in the, in this term. I wouldn't see that as something that has to go to the voters, but certainly when we were talking about, you know, potentially, you know, you know...
Significant changes from the current.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. I thought the minor, the last minority, I thought it was interesting that they focused on, because we'd seen the model of Bend, which had done it based on percentage of median income, I think, and I thought it was interesting that this person wanted to do it on the basis of the director's, average director's salary. But the fact that that person didn't get anyone else to agree with them, I think is fairly telling to me, and so I'm happy to just go with the majority recommendation personally.
I think the majority recommendation makes sense. I've felt for a long time that tying the stipend to CPI is, you know, is a good idea. I think the one thing that I'd want to have more conversation on so that it was more delineated is what the second bullet point means, technology tools, public transportation and child or elder care reimbursements provided on an as-needed basis, you know, that type of thing, because I think that's way too large, too unclear. I mean, for instance, for me, if I don't drive in the dark at night, do you pay for a Lyft, you know? If someone has a small child, I can see, you know, maybe some childcare, but do we buy transit tickets? But for those of us who don't use transit as much, you know, how does that work? I mean, I think there are a lot of nuances in that particular bullet. I think it's also a good idea for the mayor to have a city telephone, a city cellphone. I think that's a, that's an excellent idea, why mix it with your regular cellphone?
Because I don't want to carry two cellphones.
To add, it'd be like all the, all the county commissioners, you see them with their two cellphones around the table.
And I always think it's ridiculous.
You know, but, or, you know, or a reasonable, you know, minimal stipend for that if they had their own phone. But I would agree that, I think if we go with a majority opinion, the majority recommendation that it wouldn't need to go to the ballot, could be handled, I would think, by the budget committee.
I think that's an easy discussion. Part of us doing this now is making sure that we can build it into the budget, so as of right now, we've taken the majority opinion just because we didn't have a number, and we've put it into that budget, knowing when elections would take place, so when it would start falling into the pricing. I think that if you want to go down the path of things like figuring out childcare numbers and such, you can, you can actually do that. It's not terribly difficult on a case-by-case basis in a smaller group like this, but you could end up, because of how these impacted different election periods, where some people are receiving that remuneration, others aren't, so we may just want to talk through that.
Yeah, I think it bears more discussion, for sure.
Sure.
My thoughts. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree, and I mean, there is, you know, the, it does also suggest that there, that benefit would be capped, so there wouldn't be some sort of, you know, running off...
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't just be a never-ending...
Right.
...stream of, of money. I mean, like, right now, we all have that certain amount that's set aside for our mileage, our attendance at events where we might have to buy a meal or a coffee for somebody or, you know, whatever, and so we're pretty cautious with, with that. I mean, I know, I keep a running total now of, you know, since I, I also paid for the membership and CCBA, you know, minimize.
So I think that, I think having a bigger conversation about what, how those funds can be used, because currently, they are limited to those sorts of things. I can tell, I mean, I've, I've used very little of that, you know, but I do have to, I, I'm paying for childcare tonight to be here, so, but that's not an expense that I am able to submit now.
Well, and we may also want to have a discussion, the new city hall, we're going to be looking at the space. We talked a couple of years ago about trying to have onsite childcare for meetings, for evening meetings in particular, and have a room that could be transitioned for that use. We're going to be actually renovating a space, and I think it's probably the right time to talk about that, so instead of it being a reimbursement back to the councillor, you know, several of us tonight are struggling a little bit with childcare issues, so I also, for staff who we asked to be here at night as well, I think that there could also be some solutions there.
Well, and people that want to attend the meetings.
And they're nonprofits who provide that.
And then you have not, yeah, you have individuals who want to be here and have a lot to say. We've heard that in a couple of our planning commissions meetings lately, and so I think all these things are important. I do, I would ask that we, we need some direction from Council probably soon. I do, I would ask that we, we need some direction from council, probably soon, to make sure that we are thinking about it. The discussion about, we would only put it on the ballot if the city couldn't pay for it. You have $158 million between a biennium, you can figure out, like, that's never, that threshold will never be met. The question, I guess, to me, if we're going to go down that path is, what is the threshold for you all that seems like that's the trigger?
Right.
Is it an FTE that you're eliminating, is it change in structure of programming, stuff like that? So think about that, too, as we're going into whatever vote you want to take.
Now, we don't have a budget where we've got a nice extra little cushion somewhere where we can just go, yeah, that sounds cool, and we have to, we're talking about other people's jobs and lives, some, could be, could be.
Could be, I won't say that you're necessarily talking about that.
Could be talking about some kind of, you know, repairs that need to be done, or it could be talking about, do we now buy a new vehicle or not? Our budget is not a loose budget, our budget is very
No, in fact, I can think of two or three, four positions I would add, if I could just twitch my nose.
I think she's been talking about them with me.
Yeah, yeah, so all good things to be talked about and considered, though, for sure.
Are there any other comments that you all want to chat about before we schedule this?
I suppose it would be helpful to have a little bit more information on sort of, you know, the reimbursements that we all have sought, or, and then also, if, you know, I will do some thinking about reimbursements that I have not sought.
Yep.
Because I think without that clarity, you know, then, you know, the second bullet, you know, I mean, I think we can probably just take care of it by simply expanding the program as much
The existing line item, and
Line item could just be expanded to, you know, to help out in more situations.
And I think the point about what reimbursements you have not sought is a good one, like, I think it would be helpful for all of us to just look at our calendars, and where did you go, and what did you not ask for reimbursement on, because I think there are a lot of hidden costs in there, you know, and I sort of make those choices on a case-by-case basis, like, did I feel like this was more social than a productive meeting? In that case, I won't, I won't expense it, you know.
Yeah, well, and I also, I'd have to add to that, I know it's just a minor point, but when we're going, for instance, to cities dinners, which are quite some ways away, not a lot, granted, but some, or when we're going to Salem, you know, where any one person driving down there, it's probably roughly, you know, $55, $58 reimbursement for driving down there, how much better that would be if even three or four of us, and we're not going to talk city business, could, you know, carpool and ride together, and therefore, you know, affect a savings, and a savings in all those automobiles that are out on the road and trying to find a parking place, and all of those kind of things, so.
Well, and to give you all credit, you do that a lot.
We do, but generally, we try to limit it to only two people in a car, and quite frankly
That's a discussion for your city attorney.
We're adults, we know how to not have a city conversation, right?
We could notice a car ride, and you could invite the public with you.
Not having a city conversation.
Or we could just have a GoPro in there, and then Scott would have a racket.
There you go, got it.
Have our own video blog.
Yeah.
Driving with councilors. Mine would be hour and a half on transit, getting out to the county.
We could lip sync.
There we go.
So I am planning on putting this on for a regular session, and I am planning on just putting on another 30 minutes. If you have things that you'd like us to work on some language for, let's say, you do want to just expand the pool, send them now, we can send them directly to me, I'll work on getting some language pulled together so that that is easier for you during that discussion, and we'll go from there, but we're probably about three meetings out before we can vote on this.
So we do have to do an ordinance to change the compensation, to tie it to CPI and stuff? It's not, it's not just a policy, or is it something
I think you could do a vote of policy, but we can get you that, too, I can send out a response, but I think you will want to have that discussion with the Budget Committee, and we'll be there in February, so if you're comfortable, what I'd like to do, maybe we have one more conversation with them, bring up any items you want us to talk about, we can talk about the CPI component there, I think that's absolutely appropriate, and then bring you actual language right after that meeting. Does that work?
Sounds good.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, thanks for being here, thanks for coming in for this.
Upon adjournment of the work session, council will meet in executive session pursuant to Oregon Revise Statute ORS 192.6602H to consult with council concerning legal rights and duties regarding current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. With that, we are adjourned from the work session, and we will go into executive session. Thank you.
Are we going to the other room?
Yeah.